Joseph let us know that he will not be attending tonight. So I believe we have a full complement. Carolyn Vialli is here as well, as well as Chris Rembold. I am going to go ahead and now it is 6:30, so I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. The members attending remotely are Fred Clark, myself, Ananda Timpain, co-chair, Bill Cook, Peter Most, Garfield Reed, and Christina Kruzia. See, I butchered it this time. And Garfield Reed, of course, of course. And we have two guests, Chris Rembold and Carolyn Vialli. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and Governor Healy's extension of said law, remote participation by all members in a meeting of a public body, this meeting of the Great Barrington Housing Trust, great, well, sorry, not the housing trust. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website and on the agenda. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. All votes will be roll call. June Wolf has also joined us as a guest. June Wolf is with Habitat as well. I'm going to go ahead and go get right into it. We have a big agenda, lots of things to talk about tonight. We do not have minutes of the previous meetings. We are working on getting a better system. That's all I can say right now. Eileen Mooney has joined us and I'm sure she'll be recording as well. Oh shit, I forgot, I turned the recording off. There you go. Too many things going on at once.
We have an update from Chris on what needs to happen to resolve the minute situation?
I have to allow Chris to talk and promote to a panelist here. And I guess I could do the same.
Are you sure you picked Chris?
June, it looks like he has selected all of you.
Chris, do you have a comment?
I think you have me.
What?
Chris, my question is, can you give us an update on what's going to happen to resolve the minute situation? I think this is the third month that our minute ticker has been unable to complete the minutes. And I know you filled in, but.
We'll try to resolve it. Sorry, I'm a bit on the spot with that one. I beg your forgiveness on that.
I apologize, I didn't realize we didn't have the minutes until right before this meeting. If it continues to be an issue for the next cycle, like the next month, is it possible that we could plan at the next meeting to have an interim solution?
Yes, I think so. I think we should confront it a week or two before the next meeting.
Zoom only.
Yep. You might want to mute everybody who doesn't want to talk. You're all open.
Okay, moving on.
I did have one other question for Chris. If I could just. What? Ellen Laar is no longer doing public relations for the town. Is there someone else that can help me launch the ADU project?
We're talking about minutes right now, but.
I can come back.
I think we'll pick a.
Bill, we talked about that. There is somebody new. You and I talked on the phone and I'll get you more information.
Okay.
Update, I actually took, update on North Plain Road Prosperity Way. Carolyn Vialli is here and June Wolf is here, although I muted them at this point. The construction is moving on at a very rapid pace. They benefited by not having any rain dates. At least one thing's beneficial. The contractor is a contractor that's been successful through the town before, and I am so impressed by their work and their campus. I did take pictures, although I don't think I uploaded them to my camera. There is a sign that proclaims the forthcoming housing and giving credit to the town, Mass Works, the Affordable Housing Trust, Habitat, and our contractor. So if you haven't driven by on North Plain Road Route 41, please take a look. It's amazing just to look in from the road, what's going on. I did send in the packet also the tentative schedule. And I could share that with the screen if anybody wants to look at that. Can you see that?
Yes.
Yes.
So as you can see, the infrastructure is going to be substantially completed by the end of May, next spring, beginning of July, July period, next summer. And as you can see, the first stage one houses, which is seven modulators and three conventional houses, will commence right away and be completed roughly within six months or so. Shit. We have a couple of things to do with North Plain Road. The, in their packet tonight was a draft agreement for a purchase and sale and a second document that was entitled a development agreement. Those are necessary because we need to sign those to have Habitat have a clear path to having site control so that when they start building houses and foundations, they have the legal responsibility. I will tell you that normally we would have signed these very shortly, within a month or two after the RFP was completed in 2021. But due to the Mass Works grant, we have held off on signing a purchase and sale. As you may recall, the Mass Works grant requires the town to retain ownership through the infrastructure period. Ananda, you have a hand up.
Yeah, I just had a clarifying question about the timeline for June and Carolyn. Can you confirm for me with this updated timeline, at what point closings will happen for our, so that we can plan on our end budget requests related to down payment assistance?
I can put that back up if you like.
Thanks, Ben.
So the timeline that I was given was the most updated draft timeline with a misspelling in it is on the screen now.
Yeah. So would it be correct to understand that like the first round of down payment assistance applications would come in in FY '27?
Based on, so June and I and construction re-looked at and talked to Mass Development because they're going to try to do some, while they're still completing their work, you're going to try to do some of the excavation so we can get some of the foundations in. So it's looking like beginning August 2025. And June, you can correct me because I know you typed up the document. But I think beginning August 2025 would be when we would have the first house be available to close pending no weather upsets. And then each one of the other houses that are modulators would fall about four months after the first one. And some might get sped up depending on, you know, how quickly the finish work gets done. So June can send you the updated sheet that she just did today of when we think it'll be, but it'll go from, it would be fiscal year '26 through fiscal year '28, I think, for all 10 of the units.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
If that's helpful at all.
20 of the units or for all 10 of the units?
All 10, I'm sorry, did I say 20? I am being overly optimistic.
You said 10.
Okay, it would be first 10 would, June, can you pull up the document that has the gates that we have? Or are you physically not at your desk?
June. Hey, sorry, I've been muted, so I had to, I had to get off mute. I am, I am doing this on my phone, so I can, I can send it to you. So we are, I want to say that we're scheduling a completion for the end of 2025. There won't be a sale till probably, you know, January 1, '26 will be the first down payment assistance I think we'll need.
No, I think that date is incorrect. I think. Because the first modular is supposed to be completed as long as we can, as long as they can get the foundation in. First modular is supposed to be completed August of 2025. And then they fall right after that.
Let me see if I can cut through a little bit here. What we're interested in is maybe an estimate, best case, of closings, sale closings during fiscal '26, I believe.
Right. I think the first one would be 11/1. And then we're planning on pretty much a two-month schedule. Every two months, there'd be another one.
And between 11/1/26 and.
No, 11/1/25.
11/1/25.
11/1/25, I'm sorry, I'm still looking at the document that you gave me just the other day. 11/1/25 and 7/1/26. In other words, fiscal year 20.
Right, there would be five during that period.
And Anna, I think that's the question you were asking.
Yeah, so June, just to confirm, you believe there will be five during fiscal year '26?
Let me rephrase that. Our team believes that there will be five in fiscal year '26. I'm a little less optimistic than the rest of my team, but yeah. Okay, we'll go with five.
That's okay, because I want to, I mean, you know, the process that we're in, like, we don't know where we're going to end up, but I would rather advocate for the most, I'd rather advocate for a budget that allows for the most optimistic and yeah, that funding will go over or it will go to somebody else who needs down payment assistance. So it will be a win-win if.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. We've actually drafted a letter of support for your proposal for the CPA.
And that brings us to a segue. Well, first I want to talk about the purchase and sale agreement between the Town of Great Barrington, as represented by the Affordable Housing Trust and Central Berkshire Habitat for Humanity. As I mentioned a couple of minutes ago, normally we would have signed this soon after the RFP, but have delayed. I would like to get a motion tonight to allow the co-chairs to sign the purchase and sale agreement that was in your packet on behalf of the Affordable Housing Trust. I think we also will need a motion for the co-chairs to sign the development agreement, which is a companion document to the purchase and sale that lays out some responsibilities on site. As mentioned before, these are the two documents that will codify Habitat's role during this period between now and when they take full possession of the site on behalf of the homeowners.
So moved.
Is there any other discussion? Does anybody want to have any questions about that? June, your hand's still up or is that?
Oh no, I'm sorry. Yeah. I'm trying to do this on my phone, it's a lot harder.
I can lower it for you.
Thanks.
All right. This is a roll call vote to allow the chair, the co-chairs to sign both documents. I'm going to take one vote for both documents. I think it'll be easier. Bill Cook, do you?
Yes.
Christina? Christina, vote yes or?
You have to vote verbally, yeah.
Can you say it again, please?
Yes.
Yes, Peter?
Yes.
Yes, Garfield?
Yes.
Ananda?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, unanimous. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Documents are ready at town hall for you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. June, regarding the, as many, some of you may know, the Habitat and the Affordable Housing Trust have both submitted applications to CPA. June has just mentioned that she will offer a letter of support for our application. And we would like to have a discussion about whether the Housing Trust should provide a letter of support to the CPA supporting the application of Habitat for monies for foundations. June, can you tell us a little bit about what your application is for? I think that might be the best way to go.
Yeah, it's, it's for construction. So we, we have a funding gap. There's not a lot of sources for homeownership construction. So we are, I'm, I'm working on the budget and, you know, trying to pin it down. But I want to be able to get started as soon as possible because there's such a dire need and the project is going along so well. And we would like the crew that is there now, they're willing to do some foundations for us. And there's a little bit of the Mass Works money left to do some of them, but not all of them. So we'd like to get some money to do the rest of them and get started on some of the, you know, the modulators. You have to, you have to pay in advance to get them delivered. So we need some for that as well.
So Ananda and I had a discussion about this over the period. And we were reluctant to do this unilaterally without the knowledge or, or at least endorsement of the board to do a letter of support. And my personal reluctance is we're going in front of the CPA asking for some of the money for the same project. In other words, for the down payment assistance program that will be used for this this Sperry project. And it seems, I don't know. I was afraid that the CPA wouldn't be positive about that.
I was impressed by Ananda's presentation at the CPA meeting and by the tenor of the CPA board. It seems to me like some of them are coming around to your way of thinking that the AHT has more knowledge of housing. And I don't know that this came up, but I put it in the support letter that if the AHT has the housing money, then there's more immediacy, you know, when, as developers, we're competing in a very competitive, fast-moving real estate market. And it makes a lot more sense to have an organization like yours have the money. So we are supporting what you're doing. Having said that, there's still a funding gap. So I'm hoping we can support each other with letters of support and that, you know, that the CPA will realize that even though Great Barrington's got their 10% affordable housing, there's a lot more work to be done.
So I, this is Fred again. I would like to just say that at the time that the RFP was requested in 2020 and we awarded it in January of '21, there were some numbers that were put down as to what construction cost might be, what sales might be, what funding sources might be. If you have followed any of the construction news, you know that any of those numbers from 2021 have gone out the window.
Right.
Costs, materials have doubled in some cases. Labor has shot through the roof. Contractors are, it's construction costs that were anticipated by Habitat in 2021 won't hold now for construction in 2025 and '26. So I think that it, in order to keep these houses at an affordable price, and quite frankly, Great Barrington has one of the most rigorous construction codes chiefly around the stretch code, which is the energy code plus 10% that makes these houses wonderful because they're going to be energy efficient, but it does make them more expensive. And also, from Habitat's point of view, a lot of the work that's required to achieve the energy code has to be done by professionals. Habitat's traditional model has always been to use a large number of volunteers. And because of the current work and frankly, because they're going to be building five houses at once, you can't get as much volunteer labor coordinated and working and doing all that stuff. So I think these houses are worthy of CPA supplement. So there's my.
You took the words out of my mouth, Fred. That's exactly right.
You gave me, well, we talked about these. So we can write the letter, if the board's agreeable, we can write the letter two ways. One, we could write it sort of as a neutral letter saying that Habitat is building these, this is beneficial, and that they will have site control as of the beginning of the fiscal year. Or we could write it more enthusiastically saying that, you know, without Habitat, these houses would not be built. So we can go ahead and do something. I see that there's a hand up from Ananda.
Yeah, but I'd like to give other members of the board an opportunity to speak first if anybody has something they'd like to add.
Ananda, you attended the CPA meeting. Can you help us understand what you heard, June mentioned it, but what you heard back from the CPA with regard to its enthusiasm for permitting this trust fund to be watching over the housing funds? Or can you just give us an update so we can have a basis for answering the question?
So the short version is there was a much more openness and interest and, and the discussion, they picked up the discussion again towards the end of the meeting. And that is, we just have not had even space for discussion before, so I would say that is a very positive sign. You know, I think there are some members of the committee that have, they just have the opinion they have. And then I think there are some members of the committee that are thinking about it, and they have some real questions that are not really, they're not just about the trust. So for example, you know, one of the questions or discussion points that came up is around the committee, the CPC's sense of a responsibility to be making recommendations to voters that are specific and then voters verify that. Whereas if they turn funds over to the trust, voters don't vote on individual projects anymore. So there's just, there's some, I think, some valuable thinking happening. I would not in any way say I feel like I can predict what direction it will go. Yeah.
Let me ask you this question. So it sounds like there might be some opposition to the block grant thought that housing funds should throw through. Through. So does it make sense then that would we be asking for things such as we would like X amount for first-time home buyers? And then that goes to town meeting for approval? And Habitat, we support their ask of X dollars and that goes to town meeting for approval? Is that what we're looking at here?
Well, for the application that we have currently in, we can't break it into separate applications, but we can do what we did last year, which is we present a preliminary budget. So I do, you know, I do think, and we'll talk about this, I think, later in the agenda. I do think that the right strategy for the trust in the step two part of the application is is thinking about how we can be appropriately specific. Because what I do know from past experience is if our application is too narrow, we can't do our job. So the last few years, the way the wording on the restrictions of our funds has been, has allowed us to use it in all of the categories we use it in. And as June was saying earlier, right? Like, that allows us to make decisions in the moment about opportunities that have arisen over the course of a year. So I think that's our task in step two is to, is to have a strategy that allows for specificity for voters that isn't so narrow that we can't do our job well.
So I'm just going to finalize my comments on this to say, I fully support however we can, what we need to do to get Habitat, what it needs to move this project forward as quickly as possible. And it sounds like from the co-chairs, assisting them in their application makes sense and I'm fully in favor of that.
My recommendation is that we, like, we craft a letter that is like a statement of support for the project. It's a blanket statement of support for the project. It supports the urgency and necessity of the project. And we don't directly comment on their application over ours so that we can, so that when I'm presenting our application, I can continue to present it as our first choice. And the thing we are advocating for is that there is, is that the housing money that is CPA money is allocated to the trust and the trust disperses it. So that I'm not trying to split that argument into, but we, but we're also telling you fund. Um, so that I'm not trying to split that argument into, but we, but we're also telling you fund this project. Before ours or with ours at the same time. That's my thought on how to approach the letter, that we clearly support this project, we absolutely do support this project. And we want them to consider it in how they're considering their decisions. Um, but it allowed me some space to continue to make our argument for the direction of how the town manages affordable housing funds.
Is there anyone else, uh, any other trust members who have a comment?
I, I was wondering if Habitat would be willing to allow the housing trust to. Fund whatever development cost they need through the trust rather than going directly to CPA.
Oh, to Habitat, you mean?
Rather than Habitat go to CPA.
Okay.
Have them go to the trust.
Yeah, I was thinking about this still.
What, Bill, are you asked, like, the Habitat has an application bef- before CPC.
Right.
And if they withdraw and CPC doesn't fund us, then they're screwed.
Okay.
Right, and you can't.
For future.
I would advise again, right, like, I would advise against us.
Okay, I agree.
So, Bill, can I say that for future, that is definitely the tenor of the support letter that I wrote for your proposal? Um, I wrote about the immediacy, I wrote about that, you know, your housing knowledge, um. I personally do feel that it's better left in your hands than in the town meeting's hands, but. You know, that's my opinion, but I didn't say that, but um, but I, that's the tenor of the letter that I wrote. And I would like that very much if that's the way this went, um, but as Enanda said. That's not a risk I can take right now.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
So I like, I like the, the way that Amanda proposes to write the letter. I think it's to just make sure we also get the money.
Me too.
Okay, do we want to take a vote on this? I think perhaps, so um. The proposal is to authorize or, or, or request. That the co-chairs uh, provide a letter of. Blanket support for the Habitat project to be used to support the CPA application.
A second.
And Nanda, a second. So um, we're gonna, we're gonna call this a vote, um. Bill, can you?
Yes.
Yes, Christina?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Garfield?
Yes.
Uh, who'd I miss? Oh, uh, Enanda?
Yes.
Me and Fred, yes, so uh. One of us will draft it and the other will edit it and we'll send it back and forth and. Uh, June will, 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 will have something for you um, in a timely manner.
Okay, and we'll have something for you too, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um. I see a hand up from Mr. Garzone, uh. I don't know what, are you talking, are you interested?
I'll, I'll wait, I'll wait for citizen's speak time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um. Uh, on the agenda is the 255 Park Street Huesatonic, which is the Risingdale Ball Field. The only update I have for you is that the Berkshire Natural Resources Board met last night. And approved the purchase and sale of the property to the Affordable Housing Trust. And uh, we will address that at the December meeting with a, a closing. Uh, to be uh, shortly after, as you may recall, we. Voted uh, to allow the, to, to, to sign a purchase and sale agreement, which we have done. Uh, and we said we would bring it back to the board before the uh, sale is finalized. We will do that at the December meeting. Um, where I have some documents that I can share with you at that time. Um, are there any questions about that? Good, um. Financial reporting, Nanda, this is you.
Yeah. Um, there were no additional funds voted on uh, in the October meeting, um. So I, I can share the report from the October meeting if you'd like to see that, but you'd have to give me permissions for that, Fred. So while you give me permissions for that, um.
Oh, I'd have to make you a co-host, I've forgotten.
Um, Fred does that, I'll also just update the. The trust on, uh, Construct submitted a report to Fred and I today for July through October for emergency rental assistance. There were 13 assists in Great Barrington supporting 21 individuals, the average household size was 2.2, and there were seven landlords that. Were the recipients of the rental payments, um. As some of you know, Construct reserves spending Affordable Housing Trust funds. To the very last source of funds for rental assistance, and so actually all of these assists were able to be covered by other funds. And they're able to retain the balance with the trust um, going into the next quarter. Um, and then I'll just briefly share this for you. Uh, so you can see. Is that visible, size-wise?
Was better before, a little bigger.
A little bigger?
Yeah.
Um.
There you go.
So I think relevant for tonight's discussion is knowing that the balance of the line we. Have for the down payment loan program is currently 50,000 unspent.
Be, that's relevant because later in the agenda, we have two applications for down payment assistance.
Correct.
Um. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the CPA application, we've already covered some of that, um. Do you have any more you'd like to share, Enanda?
Um, I think, you know, just reiterating that it, do you think that it went well, um, I'm. I'm, I am mulling over how to get to the level of specificity, I'm, I think. Um. I think it, that, the, right now I'm leaning towards the best. Way to be specific, um, but still have the room to do our work is to. Really be specific about the five areas of funding, ar- areas that we use funding in and. Provide a lot of detailed information about the structure of programs where we have structure of, and. Um, include the RFP in the document as an appendancy for, um. As an example, I mean, we would update the RFP for developers if we had enough funding to release it again, but. Um. I think like ideally what I'd like to see voters have access to is. The same um, restriction wording that has gone on the warrant in the past, but maybe with the. The itemized programs accompanying it. Um, but if other people have any thoughts or that would be valuable to me as I try to. Craft something that responds to the committee members. Discussion and um, areas of trepidation.
Do you think we could ever get enough funding to buy Simon's Rock?
I don't think that they have enough funding to buy Simon's Rock. There's a roughly 800,000 and. 10% has to go to each area, a minimum of 10% has to go to each area, 5% goes to admin, and there's a portion that has to go towards paying. Um, whatever has to be paid on Memorial Field. Um, and that's, that's not that different than what we were looking at last year, so. I mean, it's just, there's limitations on how much money is available and. But I will say, I think that, um, you know, while there were definitely some, some members who were still in a solid no camp. There was a, lo- there was a, at least four people who were actively discussion, discussing it as a possibility. And that gets us closer to a vote that could go in our favor.
I think we all can appreciate and thank you very much for taking the lead on this, I know it's not easy. Uh, I. Just leave it at that. I really appreciate it.
And, um, I mean, I hope that, you know, I hope that. We do figure this out as a town, because I don't, I don't think that any of the questions that I'm stirring coming up from the CPC. Are unworthy questions, they're good things to be thinking through from a governance and. Perspective and a democracy perspective, as are what we're bringing to the table around. How to best do housing in our community, affordable housing in our community, um. So I do think that, um, it might be valuable in a future year. To have a discussion with CPC about, um, and maybe also the select board. About looking at a town meeting vote that would in some, that would endorse. This specific arrangement as a way to go directly to the voters, but I don't think that that's something to do. This year, I think this year we're getting a good response in the process, and I don't believe in undermining processes. Um, but I do think that there's an opening to, like, look.
I, I always felt like we should be having these discussions about a more. Off-cycle rather than, that if we're doing it in the context of an application. Sometimes it becomes, I, I'll use the word adversarial, it's not exactly what I mean, but. It means pitting one fund against another, and I think what I really want to had, have. Is a, a, more of a higher level discussion of. How the town in general should be using their affordable housing money, should it be going? And, 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 and I think, you know, your comments about governance are very good, and I, and I, I can appreciate. The concerns.
Yeah, and I do think, I mean, I could imagine, um. Working with the select board in the CPC to put an item before voters. That um, allows voters to affirm or not. The idea that the CPC will allocate. Their, their role is to decide how much funds annually are allocated to the Affordable Housing Trust, and the Affordable Housing Trust utilizes those funds. Um, and I think that would be a way to clean up the governance questions with direct input from voters. Uh, I just think we should, we should support this process to play out.
Absolutely.
Opening that conversation, um.
I, I think, you know, there's a couple of things, and I'll, I'll, I don't want to. Do all the comments, but um. One is the flexibility that we have to be able to purchase something if something comes along, such as. The Risingdale Ball Field, we don't know when that's going to happen and uh. We need to be nimble and agile to be able to do that, but most of the other things. We can budget for, most of the other programs that we run right now are. Programs, they're, 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 I, I make the distinction between projects. Um, by which I mean creating, developing, um. Housing and programs that support housing, and so I think a lot of the programs. Within certain parameters, we can be, we can have a pretty good idea about, um. Albeit, we need to have the flexibility to shift money between programs. That's my comment.
Right, you're muted.
Does anybody have any uh, questions or, or comments for Nanda? Again, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, please reach out to any one of us if you need any uh, assistance or, um.
Peter's been helping me on with, um. Templates for letters of support from a few organizations, um, that need some templates, so I think that's good to go, and then. Our, um. The town sources and expenses document that Chris maintains gives me information that I can use to quantify. The totality of our work over time, so I think I'm in good shape, but I will reach out with any questions.
And then I sent you a note, um, when I get back from my business trip, I can do more, so, um, please let me know how I can help.
Okay, thank you so much, um. I, I definitely will, I'm talking with Andy who, who, um, is doing some of the writing on this. With, for us, uh, this week to get step two moving along.
Okay, happy to help.
Thank you.
Um, next on the agenda is the ADU pilot program. Um, I guess that would primarily be you and, again, Enanda, uh.
Hand that over to Bill, who is.
Uh, over to Bill, okay.
Heck of getting the word out.
Yes, um. I was going to pass stuff off to Ellen Lar, but. She's not working with the town anymore, I guess I would ask the group for permission to put ads in the shopper's guide, um. They're ready to go, and also social media, that's, I mean, I can do that myself.
Mm-hmm.
Now, just, this is Chris, hi Bill, sorry for not being able to get back to you on that, yeah, I, we're just trying to. Smooth the appropriate PR protocol, getting information out, and of course now today. Focus is elsewhere, but I'll get you the information and uh.
At least so.
Channels as soon as I can, okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Um, do, we need to vote to approve that spending? I mean, it's not much, but we still do. Uh, I make a motion, uh, to. How much money do you want to put aside for advertising?
I think it's uh, about $79 per ad, depending on how many you want to run. I can make smaller ads, um, I think probably three or $400 would be as much as we need.
Uh, so.
Maybe not to exceed 500?
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah. Social media is no problem, there's no cost.
So I have a question, um, is, I wasn't sure that we were doing the marketing for this. I thought Construct was taking over part of it, or are they just doing the administrative?
They're just, yeah, the administrative as far as that, yeah.
Um.
The application is live on Construct's website, and Bill has also made a link from our website, but to get people aware of that. Um, and there's also a press release, correct, Bill?
Yes.
From the town?
From the town, or from the town's PR person whenever that comes around.
Enanda, do you want to go ahead and complete your motion?
Um, I make a motion to uh, create an advertising budget not to exceed $500 for the ADU pilot project.
I second.
Um, is there any comments? Hearing none, um, this is a roll call vote, uh. Uh, Bill Cook?
Yes.
Enanda Tim Payne? Peter Most?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Garfield?
Yes.
And Chair of Earth, Fred votes yes, so unanimous. Um. Good, I'm glad that that's uh, taken off, I think. I saw some comments that there were some people who were interested in this as well. Uh, it's, it's promises to be a very interesting and revolutionary program, you know, maybe uh, not revolutionary, uh. Maybe not groundbreaking, but at least um. Cutting edge, how about that for thing? Um, next on the agenda is the planning board review of the mobile home and tiny house. I think maybe we'll pass over that because Joseph is not here unless anyone else can comment about that.
This is Chris, obviously I was at that. Meeting, I thought Joe made a really effective and clear. Presentation of of what he hoped the planning board would would consider. And I think it was well received and I think the planning board will be. Taking it up again at a very um, excuse me, at the December meeting.
Thank you, Chris.
Hey, Chris, uh, do you need anything from us? Um, I'm not sure if Joseph uh. Showed you some examples of the. Okay, do you need anything else? From us, any more information on on design and stuff like this?
No, I I think the planning board has all it needs for now.
Okay, great.
Okay, um. So uh, moving on. New business, we have two applications for uh. Down payment assistance, which is pretty amazing considering that for a long time we didn't have. We were not getting very many of these at all. Uh, the. Mortgage um. Brokers have been working very hard. I talked to a couple this week and they're very much. Uh, interested in this program, the the two that we have here, both mortgage originators say. That without this grant, uh, these projects would be in jeopardy and may not um have been. Going forward, so the first one is for um. Oops, that's the wrong one. Uh, I was gonna do the other one first, which I have to find it here, nope. Sorry. I guess I don't have it up. Uh, Oak Street, it was in your package, let me see if I can pull it up quickly. You'll just bear with me two secs. And I'll make this slightly larger. Um, this is a house who's a tonic to be purchased for two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, the buyer is income qualified. They have gone through and completed the uh required counseling. And they meet all of the requirements, um. The house is two hundred and forty thousand. Our program says that we will give a grant up a loan, sorry. Up to ten percent, so the request is for twenty four thousand dollars. Uh, the buyer is Ryan. Guidi. Um, there. Does anyone have any questions about this application? There is money, there is sufficient money in our our program. Okay, um.
Since I make a motion to approve uh this application. The Guidi application on Oak Street and Who's a Tonic.
Uh, any discussion hearing none?
Oh, I I had just a question. One of the sellers has the same last name, is that a?
That's the other one.
No, this one too.
Okay.
Andrew Smith and Sandra. Odino. And Karen Guidi.
Yes.
I'm just wondering if what what that's what the story is with that.
I think that this is an estate. I know that the other one is an estate as well. And he is a family member uh buying it. From the estate. I believe that they live in the house now, that this is the house that they currently live in, if you notice his address. Is the same as the the house that they're buying there, um. And I think that that explains the uh last name.
Okay. That's fine.
Um, it's a situation's gonna come up with the other one as well, so. But it's a good, it's a good question.
This is uh, this is Chris, so. When these, when these come in, we we do. Read through things like this and contact. The brokers and attorneys to. See what's going on and do our best to ensure that it's um. You know, first of all, a legal transaction, second of all, everybody's qualified and that third of all, everybody's willing to. Enter into the mortgage and promissory note that the trust requires, so. You know, I think that's. That's um really important for you to know that we do check that and that we we work with the bank to make sure that everybody's income qualified. I just wanted to say that for your record.
Thank you.
Are there any, are there any other questions? Regarding this application? I think we have a motion, did we have a motion already? We have a motion from Ananda. Which has been seconded, I believe, correct? Uh, so uh, this is a. Vote to uh. Provide a twenty four thousand dollar. Down paying assistance loan under our terms for uh. Two fifteen Oak Street in Who's a Tonic. Uh, Bill Cook.
Yes.
And then to Payne.
Yes.
Christina.
Yes.
Peter Most.
Yes.
Garfield. Garfield, you still with us?
Uh, he's muted.
Garfield?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Yes, yes, yes.
And Fred votes yes, so thank you, everybody. The second application is for a house on North Plain Road. This is, I did have a an extent, uh, extensive discussion with the mortgage broker. Because um. I was quite frankly questioning whether a four hundred thousand dollar house could be considered an affordable housing. House. And I'm convinced that it is, and I'm convinced that. This person uh is. Qualified and worthy of our application, so the buyer is a twenty nine year old man. Who is the grandson of the people who lived in this house, so his, this was his grandfather's house that his father grew up in. Uh, his grandfather has passed and his father and. Siblings inherited the house and he's buying the house from the estate. Um, the. Buyer works as a chef. At the Stockbridge General Store, uh, I believe, uh, which is actually owned by his aunt. And um. He. Wants the house to stay in the family. Um, if you'll notice, his father uh is providing a gift of equity. Uh, in the property. Uh, consistent with his share of the inheritance. So the actual um purchase price of the house. After that gift of equity is two hundred and eighty five thousand dollars, uh, even though the house is is worth um. Four hundred and twenty, the assessor has it at three hundred and forty, but we know that they're sometimes behind. Uh, what the true value is. Anyway, um, I'm the opinion that this um application. Is exactly the way the, is exactly the kind of person that we. Uh, should be helping and that the program is designed to help. We've a cha- uh checked. Income verification and he's completed the required um counseling. And he's been underwritten by by Lee Bank. So um, the application is for twenty five thousand dollar down payment assistance loan.
I make a motion to approve the, uh, was it Troyano? Down payment assistance request at uh twenty five thousand.
Second.
Uh, any additional discussion, any comments?
Yeah, question.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, my question is about the equity um per. Uh, contribution, um, you know, and I was interested in the Habitat for Humanity Housing. And I actually had some friends that wanted to uh provide some funding, so it really low. Load my price so I could afford it, so the bank could approve me and I was told that absolutely that cannot happen. Is this just because it was a habitat for humanity, housing, or what is the story here?
I think it's because it's equity and not cash.
Uh, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
The bank has told me that. Without the gift of equity, they would not be able to underwrite this loan.
I mean, Christina is correct that um there. There are very strict limitations on what you can receive as a gift in the process of purchasing a house, purchasing a house. But I I do think that the difference here is that it's equity versus cash, which has a a cap and has to be a family member.
The one concern that I had was we have a. A provision in our regulation that uh allows us to waive. The loan if the prop, if if housing prices crash, say somebody buys a house at the top of the market. And housing prices crash, we say that if the house is resold in a legitimate sale. At ninety percent or less of your purchase price, you don't have to pay us back the the loan. Um, and I was concerned that somebody could. Manipulate our system to do that, but I'm I.
Well, and it looks like the documentation we have places the purchase price at two eighty five, not at the value of the home.
Correct.
Yeah, I I'm all for, you know, supporting. Families who have been in town for generations to allow them to stay in town. So I have no issue approving this, but I think we may want to at some point take another look at. Qualifiers.
Agreed. We have a very simple, straightforward. Without a whole lot of um. Hoops to jump through.
Yeah.
Um, there are benefits to that, but you know. I think we need to have be informed by by our programs as to whether we're we're what we're doing. Does need some more uh qualifiers, as you say.
Yeah, I think I want to, I want to include a uh, an assessment done by the trust.
Yeah.
Of the house.
Question from voting on this application.
Right. So um. We had a, Peter, did you have a comment too? I thought you raised your hand, no. We have a motion on the table.
Actually, I guess I have a question. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. Uh, are we gonna set a bad precedent or anything with the price of four hundred and twenty thousand when we were? Or are we looking at at two hundred and eighty five? Because weren't we capping at like three hundred or three something?
I think, I think there's two things, one, we're looking at a purchase price of two eighty five. And then the second thing I would say is that um. The current, the current requirements of the program that you be income qualified and able to. Qualify for a mortgage for the purchase price of the house, whatever it may be, actually leaves a fairly small Venn diagram of overlap. Where we know somebody has to, it has to be financially viable or they won't be able to be approved for the mortgage. And they have to meet our income requirements, so. Um, even to me, even if the purchase price were different. Having. You know, having that um certification from the mortgage lender. That this is financially viable and we have the verification on the income. And he makes it, it's not, I have no worries about precedent in either direction.
Yeah.
And I am open to a different discussion reviewing. What qualifies somebody for the program, I just think it should be. Clear that the conversation we're having right now is just about an application that does qualify.
Right.
I I will tell you that the mortgage broker told me that without the. Affordable Housing Trust Fund contribution, it would be difficult and perhaps even more. Very difficult um for this to go forward, he, she said that. We're making it happen and and I'm really pleased that we are making it happen for the, for that reason, so. Um, so uh, we uh, there's no other comments. Uh, this is a motion that's on the table for twenty five thousand dollars for the Tryano application on North Plain Road. Um, Bill Cook.
Yes. Yes.
Uh, Ananda Tim Payne.
Yes.
Um. Peter Most.
Yes.
Christina.
Yes.
Garfield.
Yes.
And Chair Fred votes yes, uh, thank you, everybody. New business, um. We, Bill, uh, asked that we add the affordable housing tax exemption. To our uh agenda. For um discussion tonight. For those of you who uh follow the election, uh, one of the things that happened. In Berkshire County was that there were. Two or three Sheffield and Aggermont, I believe, passed CPA. Sheffield passed it.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, that's, Aggermont passed it and I think Sheffield did, but. Maybe they didn't. Anyway, Aggermont also adopted um. A mass general law section that allowed a housing property tax. Exemption for affordable housing. Uh, so the state has an enabling law that must be uh adopted and modified by. Um, local towns, Aggermont has approved that. Uh, they're still working out some of the details. Um, Bill asked that we put it. On our agenda for tonight, um, for discussion, so Bill, can I ask you to? Go ahead and.
I mean, it's a great program, I think we should uh ask. As a group, ask the select board to include it in the next available town meeting, whether it's a special meeting. Or a regular town meeting that uh the town should adopt this.
I think that we need to have some discussion and some examination of this. Because I do think that there's a lot of. Um considerations that. Are not completely apparent, such as what would it cost the town? Uh who would it apply to? Does it? I mean, I've had some discussions with Aggermont about some of the. Uh. Regulations that they're working on to to enforce it and there's still some other kinds of things, so I think that. I think it's a good idea. I don't know that the Housing Trust is the right. Vehicle to be sponsoring this. Um but that's a personal. Personal concern.
Billy, you're saying that you you're saying that you think the vehicle for sponsoring it is the select.
Well, they would have to put it on the warrant.
Why wouldn't you, as a citizen, go to the select board and ask them to do it? Why do we want the Affordable Housing Trust to write that letter?
Well, because our it, I mean, we've been discussing and acting on the belief that our role is also advocacy. And I would say that the position we're taking in front of the CPC is an advocacy position. And the position that we're taking with the planning board is as an advocacy position, where we're saying. This is not our decision to make, this is your decision to make, but our expertise is advocating for affordable housing. And so here's the case we're putting before you and asking you to consider.
Yes.
Okay. How do people feel about that?
Feeling good about it.
Peter.
Um would it be responsible for us to talk to the assessor to get some idea of what the fiscal impact would be? Because I imagine the select board would would ask the ex- the assessor what the fiscal impact would be. Uh and by the way, I say that as someone who want who supports this idea. I'm just wondering if there's if we're gonna support this idea, if we should get all our ducks in a row in doing that.
I would say yes, but.
This is Chris with respect, if the select board wanted to move forward, they would direct the town manager to. Have the assessor look into that. It'd be premature for this committee to. Yeah, I think yes, I just just respecting staff time. Just like we want to move forward, they'll make sure all the information is on the table.
Right.
Chris, the correct way for us to do it then would be to to say, we you know. We recommend that the the select board. Um look closely at this and would request like that. These steps be taken and looking into it, and then it's in the select board's hands and they decide.
That's a great approach, and then the town manager can direct the staff. Or or interim town manager.
Or assistant town manager.
Interim, um and and then my other question, if I may, is. Um would would this be for all properties that are currently affordable housing? Or would we be using this to promote affordable housing by asking people to. Turn units into affordable housing in order to get the property tax exemption?
I think both.
To be determined, okay? Um I do think that we need to look at this closely. I think that the devil becomes in the details in terms of what. Level of affordable housing, rental housing, we're talking about. Because I believe that there are um. Windows, if you will, that um there are things that. Qualify as affordable housing, for instance, thirty percent of a hundred percent AMI. Would yield something like an eighteen hundred dollar per month rent. But there are apartments already renting at or below eighteen hundred dollars per month. Do we provide a subsidy for somebody who's already giving? Who's market rate, or are we trying to encourage additional uh affordable housing?
So Fred, you hit on exactly what I was thinking about. Uh there's a landlord in downtown. That um has a number of units and they're all rented at um below eighty percent AMI. And if if this was sort of, if that individual was grandfathered in, um if it well. It's it's really a benefit and and he has said he's always going to do that because he believes in affordable housing. Uh but if you were to use this as a carrot, to have people want to turn property that isn't. Um that that makes it perhaps even a a a better process. And and you have to, and of course, you have to consider the fiscal impact um on account.
Um. The documents provided in the packets is as um. That the municipality's legislative body may establish the parameters of a for of the affordable housing property tax exemption. And so I I would like to suggest that um. Given what we've just experienced with the planning board, we're having some level of. Detail around what issues to think through. Um was valuable and something they asked for. That perhaps we create a subcommittee between this meeting and the next meeting that looks into what parameters we would recommend. The select board can ti- consider, or at least what issues we'd want them to consider. You know, just this, you know, this is the first time I'm thinking about it and talking about it with you all, but just at this first pass, I'm thinking this is a program. That. I would, you know, I would see it as a good place for us to be limiting um. Affordable housing to a percentage of AMI instead of the full AMI possibly.
Garfield, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I am a member of select when they're very uncomfortable with this conversation, don't really wanna be part of it.
Okay.
Do I wanna step away until you're done?
Yeah, understood, um.
I think this would also be a great boost to the ADU program.
I I what I I I like Ananda's idea, I think that if we um. Take the next month and look at some of the issues just so that we can understand them. And uh be able to answer some very simple rudimentary questions. I also think that we should maybe take a a a possible example and say. Here's how it would apply in this case and um. And I think that if we do that and we come back to it in the December meeting. We'll still be in time to get on the select board agenda and uh have it included on the uh warrant.
And I mean, I. And I think this conversation has come up in the past and. I I know that there are select board members that will have hesitation about this for financial reasons for the town. So I don't think we should assume that there will be any particular outcome. But I do think that it's a good role for us to take to advocate and to ask. Different boards to take up parts of the work related to affordable housing.
Uh Bill, do you wanna continue with this uh?
I'd be happy to be part of a subcommittee or whatever.
And a clarification, maybe ask Ananda, do we need to post for that subcommittee?
Yes. But if you're really like, I think we're probably really talking about that there's one meeting between now and December and you just get it up there and it has one agenda item to talk about this and.
Uh is there anyone else who's interested in subcommittee in December?
Um I don't know how many people you can have on a subcommittee. If there's room for me, I'd be happy to join, but I don't wanna take somebody's spot.
No, I think right now it's you and Bill, so you're safe.
We're good.
I think we'll streamline it and make it you and Bill and uh I'll be happy to post uh if you let me know. What you wanna do.
Okay.
Christina, is this not something you, do you wanna be part of this?
I am interested very much, but um because I'm still looking for the car. My mind is just. You know, I would love to meet with you guys if you have the meeting and you have my. My but I I might not be able to provide much of a help.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay.
Valuable pers- perspective as somebody who's a renter in Great Barrington.
So uh. Why don't we tentatively say that uh Bill Cook, Peter Most and Christina.
It's Kuzicza. That's very good.
Uh will be part of a subcommittee, not all members may meet at all at all times. Um and uh we are going to put it on the agenda for the December meeting. Um. Which time we'll uh likely have a letter that will forward to the uh town manager and select board.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Do we do? Do we need to have a vote for this subcommittee? God, I hope not.
I I don't think so.
I don't think we need a vote.
I think the important thing is that we've, it is definitely a subcommittee and it will be publicly posted.
Okay.
Um. That's all I have on the agenda. Um. Are there any members who would like to speak or talk about anything that we haven't covered? Uh we're actually doing well for time. Hearing none. Uh in Garfield is still absent. Um. And Mr. Garzone, you are up.
Thank you, it's James Garzone eighty four, North Plain Road, just two quick points. One, Simon's Rock. Obviously, the Affordable Housing Trust can buy the whole property, but I'm hoping. That the administration sort of Simon's Rock will work with the community as they've been quoted. And perhaps maybe the Affordable Housing can purchase a piece of it. You know, there are buildings that would be perfect for affordable housing. That either could be donated or or sold at a discount and maybe the Affordable Housing Trust can can look into that. Second point is what I've been saying for quite a while about the CPC and. I have unfortunately been traveling internationally, so I missed the last CPC meeting and I'm gonna miss the the next one. But my my crux is in twenty seventeen, the town voters were told. That we're going to. Create the Affordable Housing Trust with funds directly from the CPC, from CPA funds. I know there's still distrust or whatever with people in the CPC board not giving. The money directly to affordable housing trust, which just boggles my mind now that we have to again. Do this process, which Ananda, thank you so much for spearheading this. And I hope maybe we can put it before the town at the May meeting. And have the voters, the citizens vote again and say. We voted in twenty seventeen, you are the experts, you are the ones that should be having the CPA money. We shouldn't have to have. June or Ra- or anyone else come before the CPC and your body and ask for the same money. It's duplicative. It's a waste of resources and time. And again, I stress, you are the experts. We as citizens voted for you to be the experts, and I know I'm repeating, I know I'm preaching to the choir. So I'm gonna keep on saying this, I'm gonna try to make the CPC meeting, although I'll be internationally, but. This has to be repeated over and over until finally we get some headway and thank you, Ananda, and thank you for all your work. That's it.
Um thank you, James, for your uh comment.
I have a question, um it's just curious because I haven't heard, is Simon's Rock for sale?
Uh Simon's Rock uh sent a press release out today saying that they're closing at the end of the year. Uh that they're going to transfer the campus to their Annandale and Hudson campus, the Messina campus down in there. Uh and that they will be selling the campus, yes.
No, it was donated, you know, the.
I wanna make it the new Monument Mountain High School because I'm con- I'm convinced that. You could buy the whole campus for less than a hundred and thirty five million dollars.
Fred, that's a great idea. Wow, I mean, I'm being serious. That would be fantastic.
You have to remember that um. That's that's the total price tag, but the town's cost, the town's cost. Or the town's collective costs are gonna be less.
Ninety nine ninety nine million is the is the the three town shared costs. On the latest estimate.
I I need to say, there are no official costs yet. There's there are placeholders.
This was the, this was the last estimate that was released.
Exactly.
Yeah, this is not the venue for this at this time, but um. Um but yes, uh Peter is right, the 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 spreadsheet that the architects and project managers sent out. Was between ninety nine and a hundred and one million would be the town's, the three town share.
Yes, they serve on that.
By three town share, I don't understand this.
Um they Berkshire Hills that runs Monument Mountain High School and the elementary and middle school. Are regional districts made up of three towns, Stockbridge, West Stockbridge and Great Barrington. So. None of the people who tuition in, none of the people who have uh. School choiced in pay anything towards capital expenses.
I I actually understand this, I know this. Uh I was just thinking. So you you're talking about that what would be the price for fixing the the school versus the price for the?
Yeah, I was just making note that the total, when there is a total cost of the project for the school.
Not only we will be paying for it.
That that the state will pay. But um not if you do something else.
I think the affordable housing is a great idea.
Um well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry that there's so many jobs that will be lost. You know, I'm sure people will be moving to uh other uh maybe other Bard College. Places, especially if you're a tenured professor, but there are a lot of other people who are uh in support roles.
Um.
And those people will need affordable housing.
We have, we. Should we finish with media speak time?
Yes, we should, I mean.
Oh, sorry, Garfield.
No, I was just gonna suggest that we finish our meeting and you all can talk about the school if you like.
You're right, we shouldn't be talking about it. Uh are there any other comments regarding affordable housing specifically? From either the panelists, the attendees or the media?
I just have one thing to say and um. I've always felt this way, the same way Mr. Garzone feels. Uh we are the experts, um that's why we're 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 here, that's what we were chosen to do, if you will. Uh and uh the hoop jumping is is a little unnecessary, I think.
Uh this is Chris, your next meeting, I think you have scheduled for the seventeenth, that's actually a CPA meeting night. Just fine, you can do it the same night, there's no prohibition, but if they talk housing.
Well, I think that the CPA should then move because we already had that date.
Yep, CPA is locked in.
No, we already had that date.
Fred, this C- the CPA is gonna meet three days.
The CPA is locked in, it's on the applications, so that is what it is. I can see if they can move housing to the nut another night. Not up to me, I'm just letting you know.
We will work on, so uh the next meeting would be the third Tuesday, which I believe is December seventeenth. Um we will need to be confirmed on that and we'll try to work it out.
Could we just? Could we just move it um? Chris, what are the dates? It's the tenth, the seventeenth, and there's a third date, right?
The eighteenth is open.
So could we move our meeting to the eighteenth?
That would be a Wednesday.
Correct.
I have another meeting that night.
Okay.
But um. I don't really like that committee, so I can skip.
Okay, I I have no issue with the eighteenth.
Yeah, neither do I.
And what's wrong with the seventeen? I'm sorry, I missed it.
The CPC, the CPA.
Yes, I got it.
And I will need to attend that meeting likely.
Actually, my meeting on the eighteenth is at five o'clock, so I might actually be over by six, six thirty.
Okay, if the CPA can do housing another night, I guarantee they're not. Doing it on the seventeenth, I'll let you know, but. Again, this, it's a. For anybody who's been through the CPA process before, it's three intense nights at least and applications can lead into one night or the next.
Yeah.
Well, the problem is that if you start on the seventeenth and they don't get through all of the housing.
Starting on the seventeenth, the it starts the week before. Um, yeah, can we just move our meeting to the eighteenth and then?
We will move our meeting to the eighteenth. At six thirty uh on Zoom.
Great.
Okay.
That's it, Wednesday.
I think that.
All right, it's now eight o'clock. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Fred.